All right. It is now 7:01 and I'm calling the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, June 3rd, to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our chair is just arriving. I was just going to announce that you were running late, so take a moment.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And Mr. Hool is unable to be with us this evening. So the first item under announcements is the Central Mass Mosquito Control Program that comes out of the Board of Health. And if residents, they come out and they spray for the mosquitoes and they start increments to get the larvae, the eggs, they go through the life cycle of it. People can request their property to be sprayed or not to be sprayed. Their phone number is (508) 393-3055 and their website is at cmcp.org. Central Mass Mosquito Control Project. Any direct questions for the town should be directed through the Board of Health.
Yeah, we can hold off on the minutes.
Madam Chair, so yours.
Thank you very much, appreciate the apologies for my tardiness. All right, so we'll... Did everybody have a chance to read the meeting minutes? I know I didn't. We've got them.
I wasn't there at the meeting, so I...
Did you have a chance to read them yet, Kevin?
I didn't.
So why don't we put these on next agenda?
Okay.
So we'll move that down. Okay. We received a letter of resignation from Lincoln Barber as a Veterans Agent, effective immediately. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to accept Mr. Barber's resignation with regret as he's been serving the town in this capacity for 14 years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Crusoe, as a matter, we typically will send a letter to individuals who resigned as a thank you.
Yep.
So if we could make sure that gets done.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we have Departments, Trustees, Veterans, Memorial Park requested to be on tonight's agenda. Come on up. As I said in my email, I know there's a lot of questions. I said we'll have some of the answers, not all of the answers. And I think Mr. Crusoe did a little bit of research on a few of the items.
Well, I'm still learning.
Yeah.
So right now, we appreciate you coming in and signing off on the agreement that we all signed off on. That's been mailed. We haven't received their signed off, executed part of that agreement yet. So the documents went out to them. We'll hear back and get our documents. Funding can't start, we can't start paying for anything, or they won't reimburse us for anything paid before July 1st. And it's a July 1st through June 30th of 2020 grant that we're dealing with here. So that's what I know so far.
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us here, ladies and gentlemen. Richard Hurtel from 70 Quaker Street and John Hadley. I've given this gentleman a list of questions that the trustees have concerns over. I'll quickly read over the questions. And like I said, I've given this gentleman a copy of the questions so that we can move forward on this. The first question is, if contractors require a deposit, are we allowed to give a deposit to someone who is going to do the work? So that's question number two, number one. Question number two, how long does it take for a contractor to get final payment after completion? The reason we have that question is if we're going to be negotiating or getting prices and the question is presented to us, we would like to give that gentleman or that company a reasonable timeframe, whether it be 30, 60, whatever. We just want it to be upfront with whatever the timeframe is. Number three, is there a list of contractors that we need to choose from? Does the town have contractors that are under contract? Do work for us? Because there's various jobs that's being proposed on this. Number four, what type of insurance is the town going to require from these subcontractors? Whether it be a certain dollar amount of liability insurance? Those are all things that we need to know upfront so that when we start questioning these individual companies, we can say the town requires A, B, C, just to expedite things. Permits for the lighting and gazebo, is the individual contractor going to be responsible? Or is the town taking out the permit for the whole ball of wax? So that's question number five. Number six, we were met by the chief and Trish down there with the, some information about this thing. And I had a question, like specs for the job, like thickness of the concrete for sidewalks and everything. Where do we get that information so that we can incorporate that when we send these flyers out to either invitation for bids? We need to have that information in there so that somebody doesn't come back with a price for two inches and it's supposed to be six inches or so. So there's things over there that we need to know on. Number seven is oversee the job to ensure job is being done according to the specs. Is that going to fall under the jurisdiction of the building inspector, highway superintendent, or somebody who's knowledgeable with the specs of that type of work? And the eighth question is time to start?
We got that.
Finish? Okay, we've just been given that.
Right.
So those are the questions that I've just given this gentleman. John, did you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, just number seven, the overseers of the job. We have one gentleman on the board who's very knowledgeable in construction items and he's willing to oversee the job. But do we need anyone else but him? I don't know what the town requires.
Okay.
But he can be there, he can watch everything that's going on and check the specs. Yeah, just the lighting, when you said the lighting permits, it's for lights around the sidewalk and also to light the gazebo. So...
Yeah, we've given this gentleman a rough draft of what is being proposed, but again, it's kind of like in its infancy.
Right.
And before we spend time searching for contractors and getting prices, there's a lot of information we need to know so that those specs can be incorporated in the invitation for bids.
Yeah, we appreciate having all the questions ahead of time and look at these answers.
Yeah. Great questions. I have that because they use that for pricing out what the, you know, what the grant was.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the chief met with you and talked about design changes that you had wanted, correct?
Yeah.
So we would have to look at incorporating those into the final draft that goes out.
Exactly. Well, that's what, we want to get all the groundwork done so when we start this, there'll be no stopping and asking of questions later. We'll have everything we need to know.
We've received one quote from Andrews Engineering because one of the things that the trustees were very adamant about getting was surveying the property where the septic design for the leak, for the fire station is and markers for the location of the property where the bounds are. We got a quote of like $1,700 with in writing. And I was a little uncomfortable signing and committing to that without knowing timeframe and...
How we're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't sign anything at this point in time, only because we're still waiting on information from the state and the grant. So I wouldn't sign anything at this time. We don't want to bound ourselves to anything that we don't, we're not approved for.
Right. Do you have any questions?
And I think that may need to be signed through the town administrators because the park grant was actually applied for through the town administrator office. So as far as maybe the bids and the, all that kind of, when it goes out in conjunction with your board, I think it needs to come through.
Right. It's a little work to get around that because it was good for like 60 days and that was quite a few months ago.
Right.
When we first started doing some research and we had to put the brakes on certain things because there's too many unanswered questions to get quotes and everything else, so...
And I can just speak of what I know about it because I worked with the chief and Trish when we didn't have any town administrator. And he has that full, he has the full file on that.
I may have that. I have two inches worth of file.
And it's in a blue folder, you might have it.
Yes, I have it, yes.
So the Centennial Commemoration Committee released their money at their last meeting. So that will actually start as that first seed money. So as you pay out, then you then turn and will submit your bills, or the town will submit their bills to that grant and then they'll reimburse. So you're starting off with the seed money from the centennial, which will pay the first round. You pay them out, you apply to the state. Their turnaround isn't horrible. And leases works with them on, when the money comes in because it just kind of shows up in our account. So you have to be watchful of that.
Like a direct deposit type.
Yep. So then that comes in and it's diverted back.
So that we can tell the, you know, prospective contractors that it's a 30-day window, 90-day, you know?
As long as you keep your eye on that initial seed money and keep your eye on the money that's coming back in from the state and keeping that, that ledger, you know, balance, not balance, but keeping your eye on it, then you, you know, coordinating.
There should be no delays in that.
And coordinating, you know, what things are being done. But that's how the money works through that park grant. I was going to say deposits. The permit fees we typically waive. We have in the past on all town projects.
All the tons.
Yeah, we've always waived those. I would, I would expect that to happen. And I think TEC was the group that put together that first.
Yes.
So we may want to check with them for the specs.
Okay.
They may have had...
EEC?
Yeah, I have their information.
You got that? Okay.
Yeah. As far as a clerk of the works, I'm sure between the board, we can find someone or get someone.
It's pretty knowledgeable and as far as determining three inches or four inches, we don't need, you know, a brain surgeon to say yes, that's four inches.
Yeah. In list of contractors, I don't, I know we have a list here, but that doesn't mean that if you know of people.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as we're within the bidding...
We're limited to those contractors.
Just make sure we're within the standard for procurement laws. So if there is a project that's over 25?
30,000.
30? It's up to 30. I started, it was 10. So if it's over 30,000, I don't think anything in the project is over 30,000.
Not to any one contractor.
So you would need to, you would have, some, you have to get three written bids or verbal bids or, you know. So we just want to make sure that we're in line with our procurement laws.
We'll get them all written, so we're all ready.
Yeah. Yeah, you're better off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as, you know, planning it out and...
Right.
You can do that. I think that's everything.
One thing I want to point out too, I was shown paperwork and I know the park was surveyed back in the late 40s, I believe it was. But I don't believe it was ever recorded, or at least we can't find any proof.
Oh, for the split of the property?
You're right. But it was done, but I don't think there's any, it was not recorded, I don't believe.
If it's not...
That's why we want to do this and we want to actually mark out where the, all the corner lots and corners, bounds are.
I agree. I went onto the registry of deeds and looked it up and there's, there's nothing. And to go back into the assessors books of those is back that far before the...
But it was done. I see paperwork done.
Yeah, we've seen it in the town meeting. It's just a matter of if they went out at that time and did it. So I know, I think you're...
It's not registered with the deeds office. It's not valid.
They might as well do it and do it right now. They do it differently now, anyway. They do it from the year, so...
Yeah, I agree. I agree, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions for us?
No, so we'll be working together on this. That'll be great.
Do you have all of our emails?
I'm sure I do, yep. And if I don't, we'll find them.
You'll get it. You know where we live.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen, very much.
It's going to be great.
Oh, and the insurance amount, I believe that's through our insurance company.
Yeah, I'll ask the question just to be sure, but I'm sure it's covered. The property's covered, we have liability coverage, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Usually the insurance companies have a list, whether they need to be additionally insured.
Yes.
Yep. All right. Treasurer, Collector, Board of Health, Clean Water Trust, Betterment Loan Program. Is anybody, are you represented for that?
So, yeah, I'm the, I'm trying to become the expert on it.
There you go. Getting more hats.
So what we have is, we have actually some documents and a vote to be taken. It's quite a lengthy vote. So we have, bond councils prepared the documents for signature as well as reading this vote that you all have to take.
Okay.
And what it is, is to get an interim loan at 0%, which is then used to lend out money to folks who wish to borrow it from the town at 4%. And after we've gone, after a few years, up to $300,000, we get into a permanent loan with, with the state. So it will go through the same process again, once we go to the permanent loan. And there are, you know, there's some fees associated with the work that's gone into this. There'll be fees and associated with the permanent loan that goes into place. We do a lot of work on this end in this office through the Board of Health to monitor and work with the folks to get them the money as well as document the work that's being done and oversee the work that's being done. So I don't know if you do a cost benefit analysis, whether we, we come out making money, losing money, but it's, it's, there's a pent up demand for this, so...
0% versus 4% sounds like it's good, but depends, what about the fees?
That sounds good to begin with, but there are some fees and so forth that are fairly substantial, so...
Right, right. And what, is, is there a timeline on that?
So this is ready to go right now for the interim. And the timeline is, they said, three years, but they really say three years are when we come to you to say, let's do the permanent loan.
And what is the, is there a cap on the...
300,000 is the total cap.
That's the total cap.
Total cap, that's right. And so it's a, it's a very lengthy vote that you have to take. We thought it was something simple, but turns out papers that we got today, so there are multiple things that need to be read. Then those are to be signed, there's a note to be signed and terms and conditions to be signed in that package.
Do you need this voted on tonight, or...
Well, that's your call. There is, you know, demand out there, but if you want to peruse that, because that just came through this afternoon.
Right. I think maybe, considering it's so long, I think the board would appreciate reading through this before we sign. Do you want to put it on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Does that sound good to you? It's fine. It's just a lot of information to digest in five minutes.
Yes, it sure is a lot, yep.
So we can share this. And so these are copies, so we have this.
So those are the originals to be signed. So I'll hold on to those, but we'll make copies and get them in the package for the next time.
Okay, yeah. And actually, I'll, I'll take a copy tonight and share it tonight so we have time to read it before the packets go out.
Okay, sure, sure.
Just because it's so much...
I'll give you my copy.
We could do it after, we could just scan it. I don't even need it.
All right, that's fine.
Just so we can share it ahead of time to read. I think that would be helpful.
All right.
Thank you for working on this, Peter. Anything else on this, or...
And I think Tom has, we've done this before, so we've, you know, exhausted those funds. It was a 200,000 dollar loan.
And where does the 4%, where does that come from? Is that a suggested, is it required?
We actually can go 4% or 5%. So that's really up to the town, what, the town will charge the individuals who are borrowing the money.
Right, right, okay. I just wasn't sure if there was a cap or a floor.
I think the cap is 5%. So there's a, yeah, loan origination fee, it's 1,650 bucks. There's on the, on the big nut when we go permanent.
Okay, and all that information's in here?
No, there's closing costs that are 2,500 bucks on this package and there's closing costs again in the next permanent package.
Okay. If you can share the fees with us, that would be good.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll put that on the next agenda for signature. Anything else on clean water? New business, Mr. Jeff Wing? Do you want to come on up?
Hello, everybody. I'm really happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Memorial Day went over really well. I'm here today to present the proclamation you people all signed.
That looks great.
This is for the town hall.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know who wants to accept it, but I do have some words to say that I wrote down. If you don't mind, I'll sit and do that. So I want to thank, I'm going to take the opportunity to present to the Board of Selectmen the proclamation designed, designating Millville as a Purple Heart community. I'm going to brag about the post a little bit here and just say we're doing well. The Post 411 is a viable post. We're picking up members. We have members in several different states and all this surrounding towns. We're picking up new members every week. You know, I think people are starting to get back to where they should be because we're visible when we weren't for so long, so... I want to thank the Highway Department for the work that they've done and that they will do. The town realizes that there will be no cost for the signs, that we're going to purchase them through the American Legion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the only thing is the town has to put them up. Now, it's not difficult because I've checked on several different locations and there are actually signs there and you can piggyback underneath signs. So I don't think that's a big deal. The one in the common, I'm told, will be removed. It's not staying there, that's what I'm told. I want to thank the Knights of Columbus and I have to say this, I'd like to thank Jimmy Ryan for all the work that he put into this. I know he's got money out of pocket, that he's paid for some things. I think he paid for the frames here and one of the signs. So I thank him and I thank all of the Knights of Columbus and all of the American Legion members who came out, townspeople who came to see it. And it's a big deal and I'm very, very proud that Millville's now a Purple Heart town. Thank BBT. Jerry knows, he helped out and did some, did this proclamation. I want to thank Chief Landry for his support he gave us. Was very helpful. And I want to thank the Purple Heart veterans and families who so bravely were recognized because that's not easy for people to do, to stand there and be recognized. I want to thank them. And especially in closing, I want to, I want to God bless our town, our veterans, and I want to God bless our country. God bless America.
Thank you.
So who's going to accept this?
Kevin, would you like to accept as a veteran? I think that would be appropriate.
I'm very proud.
Very proud. Okay? Thank you very much.
Well done.
Peter, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Now, I had some questions on something else, but that's probably out of line, right? I can't mention something?
Well, what is it?
Kind of a lack with the public forum.
Public forum.
Well, you mentioned, and as part of the ceremony, you mentioned that, about the centennial having funds and they releasing them just a few minutes ago?
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that we got to do is we have to take care of those murals. They were in here for so long, they wouldn't look like that if, if they weren't inside. Now, for the last couple of years, they've been out under the pavilion. Guarantee you, next year, they're not going to look like that. They're going to get moldy. Is there any way that they have any money that they could help us store them somewhere?
If, if, if we knew that prior to our meeting. We did release the funds and dissolved that committee. But I suggest reaching out to the Historical Commission.
Historical?
Mm-hmm. And you may even want to check the Mass Historical website. They do a lot of times grants and mini-grants. You might get some restoration money.
And the other thing is, do we know who's in charge of the cemeteries in town? Is it individuals or churches or...
It's different for...
So one across from Old Rudy's is in really bad shape.
Yep.
That wall. Seeing that they're going to be doing the whole road, I, to myself, it's stupid not to do something there.
So the trustees of that is Tina Landry, Robbins, Tina Robbins, Landry, Neil Robbins.
Okay.
Suzie Robbins.
Okay.
They're kind of the only ones that are left out of the actively, I know Tina worked with Mrs. Callahan in hopes to get some money to refund, to repair that wall.
So would that be a grant you're talking about?
Yeah, because they're, they're a private entity.
Okay.
So they would need to, yeah, get those funds.
Yeah, I mean, seeing that they're doing a road.
I know.
Okay.
Check with her. I know she was trying to figure out something, but I don't know where that stood. I just knew they started a conversation when we started the Central Street Bridge.
Right.
Tina had reached out to Mrs. Callahan about what, if there was any money to help with that.
All right, thank you. That's good information. That's, that's pretty much it. I appreciate that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Reposa, he's not here?
No.
Oh. Does he know about this? So we am very, very happy to announce Mr. Reposa is reaching out to us to be appointed for the Board of Assessors, which is very much needed. Obviously, he's served this town in a few different capacities for many years and I'm happy to see him back into the town hall again. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Joe Reposa to the Board of Assessors.
Do we know the term?
Three years, I think.
Three years.
It's in here. A three-year term beginning when?
So, hold on. Marilyn is 20, 21. Should I be through 22? No? Yes.
Well, hers expires the 20th, the 20th. So he'd be taking hers in. Would he be fulfilling her position?
He'd be, okay, so he would go the unexpired term?
He can go into the unexpired term and take a full three years.
Let's see, there's a vacancy here.
Yeah.
So if we do him for three, then we still need someone for the one year unexpired.
So we can do...
Because if you're appointing today?
Yeah.
She goes to the end of the month.
So we can do...
I would do...
Joe?
6/30/22.
Because his, hers expires here, yeah. So that will give him three, two, three years?
Yeah, we'll give him the full term. And then if we find someone for Marilyn's spot?
Yeah.
We could do a one-year for them.
That's fine. I'm thinking, since Joe's not here to advise us what he wants, we'll give him three years.
That sounds good to me. I'll make that motion to appoint Joe Reposa to the Board of Assessors through 6, June 30th, 2022.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just be mindful that Marilyn will need to be, she'll be stepping down, her credentials expire. She will not be renewing those. And she's informed us previously that that was her intention, so there still is one So there still is one opening on the Board of Assessors. For an unexpired one-year term.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for stepping back in. Okay, review and approve MES Water Corrective Action Plan for DEP?
So in your packet is a letter that I drafted and sent to the DEP and they came back on Friday with some changes and we've been back and forth a little bit. So I want to table that for the next meeting to put in some edits. We're negotiating what those edits might be. So that will be ongoing. So the next meeting, we'll actually have the final letter. I kind of forced their hand saying that you were going to be approving this tonight, so that got them to
Good job, Peter.
At least respond and provide some input, so. I think we'll have something substantially the same as this with a few edits and hopefully not much more. They're looking for us to commit more to the longer-term plan upfront. And that's hard, I believe that's hard to do with so many variables going on.
Right.
Including regionalization, including capacity of the school as it exists today and how it might be used in the future. So all those things are bundled into the long-term plan that I don't think we can do on a short-term basis as much as the DEP would like.
So was there any bigger, bigger items they had pushed back on or just?
No, then there was details that gets into the science of it.
Okay.
We're back and forth with our consultant here on this, so.
Okay.
And we have detail talking about iron and potassium and chlorine and such things.
Thank you. Old business.
So I just added again the vacancies of the committees and I left, I gave everybody a quick summary of the main vacancies of the committees. And one you just filled, but I didn't, I didn't know about Marilyn who's leaving.
She was our former accountant.
Yeah.
Who stepped in when we were in a pinch.
So we have, the Cable Access Committee has one position open that we know of. That's a one-year. Capital Program Committee is something that we really have to kick off and get going, but the Board of Selectmen will have to appoint somebody and Planning Board appoints somebody. I'm on it and there's a couple of other players. Conservation Commission, from what I understand, there are two positions vacant for three-year terms. Cultural Council also has two positions vacant for three-year terms. Planning Board has three for five-year terms. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but I did check with the town clerk and she verified this list, so. And she prepared this nice database, which she's putting up on the website.
Oh, good.
Veteran Services, as we know, tonight effectively one year. There's been a couple of folks interested already. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, I understand they're looking for somebody for a three-year term as well. Lastly, I put on this list, the chief is looking for somebody to help him with being, he's the MEMA director. I think he's a bit overwhelmed with that as well as being the police chief and the fire chief. So he's looking for somebody to possibly assist him, go to meetings, because he's got to go, he's got three or four that he's got to go to in the next several weeks, so.
Okay.
That would be a good learning opportunity for someone who's interested in that as well as
Right.
A great way to help the chief and the town deal with situations that might be unexpected. That's why they're called emergencies. So there's that. Separately, the board will have to be dealing with reappointing a whole bunch of folks. And letters just went out today to those folks who are on committees and boards where their term is expiring at the end of this month.
Okay.
And we're requesting that they send back a letter to us saying that they're still interested and would like to be reappointed or not. And we either will come with more vacancies or not from that effort.
All right, great. On the Planning Board, I think we have one opening. You might want to check with Brian Malali or Sergeant Coop.
Yeah, it seemed like they had a lot.
On that, because we just appointed, his first name is Chris, I can't think of his.
Drew?
Drew, thank you. I couldn't remember his last name. We just appointed him and Pam Maloney, so off the top of my head.
No, Chris Drew is listed on there.
No, but not on the up this little quick update list.
Oh, okay.
So maybe that, maybe that takes into account the, yeah. We may just want to check on that.
Yep.
Because that's one board that I know, they actively went out and seeked people to make sure that they were
Right.
That they were in good standing.
Okay.
And this list is on our website or will be on our website?
It will be on our website, that's right.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good. That's helpful.
With a little editing.
Yes. Any other updates or questions on vacancies? Hopefully, we have less and less. Anybody want to come out and volunteer, look on the website? There's plenty of opportunity to join the town. You raising your hand to volunteer for something?
No, it has to be from Millville.
Um, most of them, but not all?
Nope.
Not all?
Actually, it was a town meeting vote some years back for Mrs. Knappick, who had served on the Council on Aging and moved out of town and the town accepted a bylaw.
For all positions? Or all appointed positions?
Appointed positions. If it's an elected position, no. But for appointed positions.
Right.
They can be appointed from out of town.
Any other questions on? All right, item B, consideration of removal and no trespass order for Linda Bassett. Would you like to come up?
She doesn't need to come up, but I thought, you know, you'd asked me back when I first started, the first day I started, the first evening, to look into the matter and I've done that, come forth with a recommendation. But what I did is, you know, I spoke to the police chief, I spoke to the Jill on Council on Aging person. We've received a couple of letters, emails in support of Linda having access to the Millville Senior Center. Just today, I received a nice handwritten letter also in support. There were up to fifty people who signed a petition to ask that she be reinstated, her, the no trespass order be lifted. And she sent us, sent the board as well as, and copied me on it, a letter of apology for any offense that she might have provided to others. So it's my recommendation that you revoke that no trespass order and I drafted and bore signature to extend your vote for that. Revocation of that no trespass order. In my view, I think, you know, the community's better served if you do that. So you asked me to do that and that's where I come up.
Any questions, comments from the board?
And I met with Linda and her spouse and it was a good meeting of the minds and so forth, so. Hundred percent behind.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to lift the no trespass order on Linda Bassett for the Millville Senior Center located at Forty Prospect Street within the town limits.
Second.
Can I just point a discussion?
Absolutely.
Before we vote. I just want to say thank you. I know I had reached out to you with some of the concerns that I had and you followed up on those and you had conversations about those. And I know that previously, when it was in place, Ms. Bassett was also a member of our Council on Aging. It was a very rough time with budgets and, you know, signing of vouchers and control and things. And I think, you know, being an active member within the Senior Center as a visitor, it gives me hope that, you know, that some of those former hurdles can, and future hurdles can be overcome. So that's all I want to say.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So you have a signature to do at the end.
Okay, Peter has a reminder on here.
Well, that's right. Last meeting, I asked you all, I gave you a little homework assignment to provide me your top six plus or minus priorities for what you'd see me, like to see me focus on in the town. And so I just want to remind you of that. I did get one of the upstanding selectmen to do that already, but.
It was Erica, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Always do my homework.
And for the record, I just put it in my calendar as a reminder to get it to you, so.
I appreciate that.
I will be reminding three times before it actually.
And I have a placeholder for more.
Yeah, everything she gave me, I already had on my list anyway.
Perfect, I got to start a new list.
Add to your list.
Thank you for asking and I'm glad we're thinking alike.
I will have it to you by the end of the week.
Thank you very much.
And I'll have more for you eventually.
Of course you will.
Thank you. All right, Selectmen's Forum? Anyone?
Just two notes. Over the Memorial Day weekend, I was able to attend the Millville ceremony in which the, our committee, the Memorial Celebration Committee, was able to pull off, along with the Post 411, a really nice, really nice morning. And I know we didn't give you much time and I know we didn't give you much money, right? Zero. And, but you did get, but you did get that back on town meeting floor, so, for next year. So I want to thank you all for doing such a good job and honoring our, our local heroes and veterans. You guys did a great job, so that's. And on a similar note, though it's not within Millville, the Blackstone Ceremony that was held by their Eagle Scout that I had been following along in the newspapers and social media, I attended their ceremony on Saturday and it was, it was really nice. And if anyone has a chance, near the Old Blackstone Nursing Home, as you enter the High Rocks, there is a new memorial there. And it was a, it was again, a nice ceremony, a nice tribute. And it might be it for people to go down and just look at. It's humbling, so. That's it. That's all I got. Shout out to Millville, shout out to Blackstone. Thank you.
Kevin, anything?
I'm good.
Andrew, anything? All right, thank you. Peter, back to you.
I don't have much more than I've already done, except just to say I did meet with the town accountant. We had a good session together. I think he, you know, we're basically on the same page of many things and some things to follow up on. Also did get to sit down for some period of time with the Finance Committee folks, Aubrey and Gary. They came in here and we also had a good meeting of the minds. Our insurance rep came in because I had to do some renewal signatures and I just wanted to be sure what, I understood what our coverages were and so forth, so that, that's all happening. As to the Memorial Day, I was honored to be asked to be a speaker, emcee there. I would have, I'm shedding a little bit because it was a very beautiful day and I don't, I wasn't wearing a hat and it was kind of sunny. But really, it was, it was a great event. You should be proud. This little town of Millville really does it up nicely and everyone who participated took it quite seriously and I thought that was a special day. My, my wife and daughter and granddaughter came and they all had a ball and everybody was nice to them, so it was a good time. I'm going to the New Officials Financial Forum on Thursday at Holy Cross, so. Hopefully, that will be interesting. Next week, I'm meeting with the BBT Superintendent. He's going to give me a tour of the school and I'm really looking forward to that. And just the last thing, just last meeting, I had given you some of my observations. The one observation I'll make that really has stuck home to me is, you know, sitting back in the bullpen there, it's hard not to appreciate what goes on around here. And I will say that I, that most residents who come into this town hall are well-served and go away feeling like they were treated very well. And I think that's, you know, good testimony for the people that work here, that they treat our residents, taxpayers and, and, you know, service providers or, you know, contractors who come in all with great respect and diligently and quickly, so it's pretty impressive.
Good.
So that's all I have.
Thank you for recognizing them. Because we don't get to see them on a day-to-day.
That's right.
I do have to say, when we moved here, it's been fifteen years ago, my realtor called the town hall for something before we moved to the town. She called me back and she's like, I've never talked to a town hall that was that nice. I want to move to Millville. Because I came from a city and you don't usually hear that, so it's good to know that it's still going on.
Still going on.
I think it's the same people.
Probably.
And that's a testament to them.
To have your realtor call you and say that was really nice. I'm like, I do want to live there, so. Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's good.
Anything under your item eleven?
Nope. Nope.
I have in here.
Is this already allowed, the reserve fund transfer?
So we have a.
Were they already voted upon? Just need a signature?
Yeah, we signed the wrong place on the reserve fund transfer for the Parks and Rec.
Oh.
Okay, so we're just going to re-sign that in this thing. We're going to sign the.
Oh, I think I wrote on it too, right here, next to. I think I wrote on it.
That's right, so.
Yes.
So I have a clean one to sign.
Okay, and this is a new one, though.
And we're not going to do that. That goes, the twenty-five hundred dollars, that goes with that package. So we'll do that next time.
So I'll put that on next one, okay. So it's just signatures of that.
That's right.
Do we want to push the May twentieth meeting minutes to the next meeting? Because I don't think we all have read them.
Right.
So we'll push that. Push the reserve transfer to the next meeting. I'll sign for C. Anything else?
So I had executive session after that, just briefly.
Okay, so we are having that, okay. Question for you, was that the executive session? Does that need to be listed on the, posted as a meeting?
No, as its own meeting?
As its own meeting.
No, it can be within a meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I didn't see that posted, okay. All right, so our next regular scheduled meeting is June seventeenth. So we close this meeting and then open an executive session.
Nope, do not adjourn. We're going to sign these and then we are going to adjourn only to return. I mean, we're going to.
You do a roll call to go into executive session. A roll call to come out.
And we typically say to return to open session only to adjourn, because if not, we could come out and do anything we want.
Right.
Oh, it sounds like fun.
And there's no reason for people to stay.
If we're not going to do anything, so we always make the, we just declare that we're only coming out to adjourn the meeting.
I don't know why, I just can't get that whole concept. I can do the numbers. I don't do the procedural.
Are we signing both of these?
No, just the one on front. I just attached the original one that we signed. Just sign it in the proper place, that's all.
You only need one copy?
And then I get that to the Finance Committee.
How many copies of this do you need?
Just that original and I'll make copies of it.
I can, I'll sign two just in case.
Just in case, sure. We can deliver one in fact.
Could I just say one thing for you during?
It's up to, just that top page.
Yes.
I just want to thank everybody for Memorial Day and I just want to thank you for the session. I'm going to send you again, these are some photos for you.
Oh, isn't that nice?
These are some photos for you, get it?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I usually like getting these in the mail, Pam. I usually get a nice thing on the envelope and it says Pam and I get all excited.
That was good.
Very nice. Oh, those are nice.
Oh, my sister. We're going to do something with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
My daughter's on top.
That's good.
All right, so these are signed.
Thank you, Pam.
Want to pass these back to Peter, please?
Did Andrew sign?
Oh, I didn't see it.
Right underneath, there's the originals.
Thank you.
Just that top page.
Oh.
Under our signature, C.
Yeah, there's only three lines. I think that's what.
Yeah, just anywhere in there. Because the bottom is finance.
I get that to the Finance Committee, yep.
And you can do the whole.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You'll be a pro in no time.
I know. I just depend on you for the procedural stuff.
I move, I make a motion to enter executive session by roll call vote for the purpose, under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Subsection Twenty-One A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamster Union Local One Seventy, only to return to the meeting room to adjourn regular scheduled meeting.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait. We need a second.
We got a second?
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we'll.
Row, rule?
Aye.
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 Four ayes, okay.